The regular meeting of the Besire City Council for September the 19th, 2017 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledging of agents. Remove your hats, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
McKeever.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca. Sack.
Here.
O'Rourke.
Here.
Piper.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes from the September 5th, 2017 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Ms. Sack, to accept the September 15th, 2017 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is the time where we grant permission for visitors to speak. First on our agenda this evening are representatives from the Besire's Tree Board. If you would like to step to the podium, please, and we need your name and your address.
Yes, I'm Hillary Spring, 1112 Hillcrest Drive in Besire.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, I'm here tonight representing the Besire City Tree Board. And members of the board who are present, Sandra Ross Dash, Brad Voorhees. Not present are Dave Tuttle and Susan Cathcart. I'm here this evening representing the Besire City Tree Board. I would like to offer some insight into our goals and the work that we have accomplished since the inception of the board just a few short months ago. Our board is comprised of conscientious and dedicated citizens of Besire's, which include an arborist, an entomologist, and an agronomist. Mayor Reiser and John Ross Dash are able to digest through city responsibilities in order to avoid potential conflicts with existing city ordinances and laws. They also have attended the Tree Commission Academy in order to gain more knowledge about trees and their place in a community. As a nascent board, our primary focus thus far has been to author an ordinance to expedite and to make efficient our plans going forward. We wish to make the ordinance as comprehensive and as realistic as possible. One cannot argue the fact that a city with tree-lined streets and shade-filled public areas is much more attractive than a city with no urban canopy. We understand that construction and maintenance must be carried out on city properties, which would result in removal of established trees. Our goal is to replace these trees whenever possible and also to plant new trees where none have previously existed. We also understand that everyone does not wish to have trees in their tree lawns. We do not pretend to forcibly plant trees when there is adamant opposition to do so. However, we do plan to maintain as many existing trees as possible in tree lawns and in public areas. We will encourage all who are willing and able to do so to allow us to plant trees in accordance with our plans. We would like to see the streets in Besire's tree-lined and welcoming. Plymouth Street is a prime example of a project that we will undertake. Because of the sewer project, century-old trees had to be removed. The newly denuded street is not a welcoming entrance to our city. Hopefully, upon the completion of the sewer project, it is the board's plan to facilitate the replacement of these trees. Once a tree is gone, it will take many years to replace its canopy. Our generation may not enjoy the mature beauty of a tree-lined street that is planted today, but our children and grandchildren will be proud to call Besire's home. We had a very successful Arbor Day celebration. With the health of sponsors and schoolchildren, we planted five trees. One on the site of the Johnny Appleseed Tree on Arbors Hill, one each at the high school and the elementary school, and two at Lyons Field. Education will be important to instill pride and interest in our young people. We will meet with the state arborist, Stephanie Miller, to do a tree survey of Besire's in the fall. She will add insight into the trees that we have in Besire's, how to mitigate tree problems, and to offer suggestions for new plantings in the future. Because of our activities, we hope to one day bear the distinction of being a Tree City, USA. We certainly appreciate the funding that you have allocated to us for 2017. Hopefully, you will find good cause to continue to fund our endeavors for many years to come. Thank you very much. And I believe you all have a copy of the ordinance and for your peruse alike at your leisure.
And we'll take this and place this into Health and Safety and Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Our committee will meet on Thursday evening. I don't know whether we'll be ready for a discussion on it Thursday or not. Health and safety is... Who?
Me.
Steve? Are you going to be ready for a discussion Thursday, or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
We can wait till the next one.
Pardon me?
We can wait till the next one.
We can wait till the next one, so it'll be the 5th of October then.
Great. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions? Comments? Yes, sir?
I do know just a little bit about trees, the roots. Has there been taken into consideration about how to prevent the roots from interrupting the water lines and sewer lines and stuff like that?
That's in the ordinance.
That's in the ordinance, sir. That's covered in the ordinance. And as I say, this is a brand-new committee or a brand-new board, and it's a learning process. And as we go along, I'm sure that, you know, as different problems arise, we'll have to address those as well.
Okay, because I do know the roots are attracted to water sources.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And that is covered in our ordinance.
Okay.
Is there anyone with questions? Okay, thank you very much for coming this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
So I need a motion then to put this proposed tree ordinance into Health and Safety and Public Lands and Buildings.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wireball, to put the proposed tree ordinance into Health and Safety and Public Lands. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. And October the 5th will be the day that we'll for discussion. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council this evening? Step to the podium, please, and state your name and your address.
My name is Joel Palmer. I live at 1116 East Orange Street. I just purchased 1117 East Orange Street. That is also my mailing address as well.
Okay, what can we help you with this evening?
I was out and about, and I heard that you guys might have some problems in certain areas, like trying to find ways to solve certain problems. And I may have a way to come up with some solutions if you just ask me. Like, in Michigan, they had a project brought up for people who can't afford to fix up their own homes and do property maintenance. They've done that once a year. And I may have other ideas in other areas if you just share it with me. I might have an idea for you.
Okay. Did you leave your address and your phone number out there when you signed in with the police officer?
Just my address, the sign-in sheet.
Okay, if you put your phone number on that then, and we're glad to keep you notified of when our committee meetings are being held. And if you would like to attend those, you're more than welcome to come to the committee meetings.
Aye.
That's where we usually get into more of a broader discussion on items rather than here in the council meeting.
Right.
Okay?
Because I know sometimes you can't find things, but if you can't find them, you got to create them.
Correct. Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Anyone else to address council this evening? We need your name and address, please.
My name's Jonathan Griffin. I live at 1027 Elm Street. Can anybody tell me who my councilman is on Elm Street?
I believe it is Mr. Trucca that just walked in.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name.
Jonathan Griffin.
Jonathan Griffin? G-R-I-F-F?
G-R-I-F-F-I-N.
Okay.
I'm just here to... It was my displeasure with the city's handling of a rundown property that has turned into a hell hazard since it's been abandoned. And by displeasure with the city's handling, I mean that there has been no handling of the property. I was told to contact Gordon Groves, which... Does anyone know his hours off the top of their head? Have they known?
Usually from 8:30 to 12:30 Monday through Thursday.
Which, obviously, for a working man, is not easy to get in contact with somebody who works for four hours a day. But I did happen to be off on a Thursday, and I thought, okay, this is a good chance to call him. So I called him, and unfortunately, well, you know, nobody answers the phone. And nobody ever calls you back, so...
Did you leave a message?
I did leave a message.
And a phone number.
And a phone number and my name, and never got a phone call back. So then I sent an email, and did get an email back. And basically, the broader gist of it was, we'll get around to it. You know, this is Besire's. Drive around. There's quite a few rundown properties that anybody can see. So we'll get around to it. And my fiancee, a new mother, three-month-old son, so when you see a property next to you that has trash piled on the front porch, smells like rotting flesh, you can see bugs crawling in the windows, her stress level's up here. So she sends back an email, well, do you know when you'll be able to do an inspection? And he sent back an email that seemed to me... Maybe I'm a little defensive of it, but it seemed to me to be rude. If you'll view my last email, I said, we'll get to it. Let me get to it. There's 30 houses on my list, so on and so forth, and I didn't appreciate that. So then I figure, okay, well, I'll call the Health Department, which I understand is not a city of Besire's. It's not. It's the Health Department. Nobody answers the phone there. There's three people in Environmental Health. Call three numbers. Phone rings every single time. Leave a message for every single person who works there. Nobody calls you back. You know, I guess that's the government. So that's where we are now. There's still trash piled on the porch. The weeds and the grass are still four feet tall. There's still bugs crawling in the windows. So now, I, the new father for the first time, have had to shell out nearly $1,000 of my own money to an exterminator to try to protect my child and my fiancee from these bugs that we now see crawling across the alley, crawling in my trash cans. And with the exception of Mark and Dan Wireball, nobody has been any help at all. And I would like... I just want to know why that is. And why... You're my representative. Why not? I don't understand it.
I received a notice this morning when I came in. There was a notice from the police that they had been out to investigate it. And we received a property maintenance notification from them. Mr. Grove went out sometime this morning to investigate and photograph everything. He delivered a notice, a trash and rubbish notice, to the property. The police had spent some time. They tracked down the property management company.
Alfa Omega.
Yeah.
I had the idea. I tracked them down too.
Yeah, so they notified them as well. So we gave them the 10-day trash and rubbish notice. After 10 days, criminal charges will be filed, and the city can take steps to abate at that point in time. I did speak to Alfa and Omega today. The tenant that was living there apparently just left. According to Alfa and Omega, they paid September rent, but they moved out without notice. So Alfa and Omega is going through the eviction process right now so that they can get in and clean the property up. They have filed an eviction matter with municipal court. They're just waiting on their court date for that right now.
If they can track the guy down, they'll deliver a subpoena, and then maybe he'll show up for court, and maybe he'll be evicted. So then maybe that'll take as few as three weeks. Maybe it'll take as long as three months.
Yes.
Which leaves me still living next to a bug-infested, trash-smelling, dirty house.
Right.
And nobody doing anything about it because legally, our hands are top. As I heard from Alfa, I spoke to Alfa and Omega today too.
Yeah.
Legally, our hands are top.
Yes.
Which, you know, that's the way the law works, I understand. But it seems to me that two young people, hard-working, tax-paying, non-drug-using citizens of Besire's grew up here, stayed here, went to school, came back because we believed in Besire's, and now this is how we're being repaid. By living in a house, taking care of our house, taking care of our kids, paying our taxes, paying our water every long time, everything we're supposed to do, and there's nobody in our corner trying to help us get rid of this mess.
Well, as I said, I received a notice today. And today, the notice was delivered to the house. Make sure that that got done. And 10 days from now, when we are authorized by ordinance and statute to enter into the property, city crews can go out and abate the problem if the management company doesn't do so first. And then we'll file charges. It is a criminal offense under our city code, punishable by up to a $200 fine.
File charges against whom? The man who left the house?
The tenants.
Okay.
I have the names and copies of the driver's license and all that sort of thing.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And I mean, the next city council meeting is in 14 days, correct? Which is after 10 days. So after 10 days, nothing has been done, you can expect to see me again because I'm tired of dealing with it. I'm tired of my fiancee being stressed out. I'm tired of dealing with the fact that my three-month-old son is going to be crawling soon. Might have to be crawling on the floor with bugs that are migrating from this disgusting house. So thanks for your time. Thanks for showing up.
Anyone else to address council this evening? Anyone? We'll move on to communications and petitions.
We have one letter addressed to the mayor dated August 2017. "Thank you for the celebration of mayors from the last 50 years. The opening ceremony, the time spent with you and all other mayors and their families was a delight." This is in reference to the float of the mayors of progress, just a moment. Thanks again, Tammy Robinson.
And she is there, of course, representing her father, Derek Carrick. I need a motion to accept and file this letter?
So moved.
Second.
Do you want me to speak now?
Yeah. You yell at me on the golf course, you know. Motion by Mr. O'Rourke, second by Mr. McKeever to accept the letter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Standing committee reports. Looks like Mr. Piper, you get us started here.
Awesome. Besire City Council joint regular committees met Thursday, September 7th at 6:02 PM. Members present were Mark McKeever, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, Monica Sack, Bill O'Rourke, and myself. Public participation. Kurt Finkhauser, 1675 Salsandusky Avenue. Said he believes the reduction of the speed limit from 50 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour that was implemented earlier this year on North Sandusky Avenue on the north end of town is partially within Holmes Township, not the city of Besire's. Council President Ciss Love said the matter will be referred to the Traffic Commission. Order of committee business. Health and Safety Committee started at 6:05 PM. Members present were Mark McKeever, Bill O'Rourke, and myself. Item number one, traffic map changes. The administration requested that council consider legislation to amend the traffic control map by making the following changes. A, no parking on the south side of River Street between North Sandusky Avenue and Tiffin Street. B, no parking on the east and west sides of the 200 to 300 blocks of East Street. O'Rourke made a motion to request legislation making the above changes to the traffic control map, but the second by McKeever. Motion passed by Boyce Booth. Number two, boil advisory. Piper asked what the protocol is for notifying residents of events such as this recent city-wide boil advisory. He said information about the advisory could have been disseminated faster and more widely. Council President Ciss Love said a meeting between city officials and the County Emergency Management Agency would be held next week to fine-tune the protocol. Piper recessed. Health and Safety Committee at 6:13 PM.
Any questions or comments regarding the Health and Safety Committee minutes? None? Moving on, Finance Committee. Mr. O'Rourke.
Finance Committee met at 6:13 PM. Members of committee are Steve Piper, Dan Wireball, Montesquik, Bill O'Rourke, Karen. All were present. Item one, codified ordinance updates. The council clerk has received the updates made to the city's codified ordinances of September 1st, 2016 through September 1st, 2017, via legislation amendments to state laws. Legislation needed is needed accepting the update prepared by Walter H. String. The Sack made a motion to request legislation to accept the codified ordinance updates. The second, Mr. Piper. Motion passed by Boyce Booth. Item two, creation of crime victim grant funds for 2017. Auditor Shiper said two funds need to be established for the first quarter of the state grants, an Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Fund and Victims' Crime Act Fund. Mr. Piper made a motion to request legislation to establish the funds, and the second by Mr. Wireball. Motion passed by Boyce Booth. Item three, crime victims grant funds appropriation. Mr. Shiper said the following appropriations need to be made from the crime victims grant funds being created for the first quarter, October through December, under state grants. A, from unappropriated grant funds, $10,568.59 to Ohio Crime Victims Assistance slash Victim Advocate slash Personal Services to fund the Victims' Advocates Office. B, from unappropriated grant funds, $375 to Ohio Crime Victims Assistance slash Victim Advocate slash Materials and Supplies to fund the Victims' Advocates Office. C, for unappropriated grant funds, $2,818.29 to Victims of Crime slash Victim Advocate slash Personal Services to fund the Victims' Advocates Office. The same portion of grant, $704.57, is already been appropriated. The Sack made a motion to request legislation to make the above appropriations, seconded by Mr. Piper. Motion passed by Boyce Booth. Item two, authorization to pay for airport repairs. Mr. Shiper says some of the work has already been done and that her office has received about $11,400 in bills without the customary purchase order. She requests legislation authorizing her to retroactively pay profit, mercury, and tilling in the amount not to exceed $71,850 for total cost of the project as bills will continue to come in. The federal FAA grant will cover 9% of project costs, while state paying 5%, and the city another 5%, worth $3600. Mr. Piper made a motion to request legislation authorizing the honor to pay profit, mercury, and tilling, $71,850, and seconded by Ms. Sack. Motion passed by Boyce Booth. Work resets. Finance meeting at 6:00 PM.
Six thirty.
Any questions?
Six with 6:00 PM, excuse me.
What did you say? It was supposed to be 6:30, right? Okay. Questions or comments? Yes?
Just one item in paragraph two on the creation of the crime victims grant funds. This is actually for fiscal year 2018, these grants. We've got 2017 Americans, probably just a typo.
Sorry.
I don't think any time is right.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I don't think any time is right on the recess.
It should be 6:30.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's just a typo too. Any other questions or comments regarding this? Finance. Okay, thank you. Would you like to finish this out for us, please?
Item four, public participation. There is none. O'Rourke asked a motion during joint regular committees. Motion by Mr. McKeever, and seconded by Mr. Wireball, adjourned at 6:30 PM. Motion passed.
Thank you. You want to address this now?
Did it come?
I've got mine. I'm going to get on your phone.
I need to get mine. I got it. Okay, good. I thought it heard some buzzes. Yes, part of our plan to... A better response to when we have maybe a city-wide emergency such as a boil advisory, or a weather advisory, or train derailment, any of those things, we have... We're implementing a plan through the Crawford County EMA just to get as many people to sign up for a text alert or an email alert. We took the liberty of giving your phone numbers today to Crawford County EMA, and this text that you just received is from them. The text says, "Welcome to the Elite System." And this is what we hope to do for all residents of Besire's. We hope to have everyone sign up for this. So let's say we have the unforeseen happen and we can quickly send out a text or an email to everybody that's registered. Information on how to sign up for that is going to be on our city website in the very near future. Any questions?
Is it also going to be in the utility bill that they receive?
Yes, also in utility. It has been in the utility bill. We've had the system for quite a while, but it's just... It's going to be in the utility bill in the messages also. So if you want to sign up in the meantime, let's go ahead and check our city website. It should be on the city website within a matter of days.
Okay.
But anyway, congratulations. You're the first to sign up, and it works.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, Traffic Commission. There's no report this evening. Anyone have any traffic questions for the mayor? Other than a million of them.
Just as long as it's not about Southern Avenue or any of the railroads, I'm fine with that.
Okay, yeah, I think so.
I want to go back a second to the alerts. Since we're not... I guess on Spectrum or whoever, now we can advise on tornadoes. We using that too?
No, well, when there's weather tornadoes, you can stay. If you're already on that anyway, that won't change. Did you sign up for the tornado advisory? When you go on the website, there'll be all kinds of alerts that you'll be able to sign up to. And one will be weather advisories.
Is there any... Anything being done about trying to get back like it used to be with the police department, you revise citizens over the TV?
I don't think... We did talk about that. There was... Do you remember, John, why that can't be done?
Yeah, since they switched over to Spectrum, that option is no longer available.
But the Spectrum...
Okay, true.
I believe the evening of the tornadoes, because it woke me up, there was an alert that came across about flash flooding. And so, I mean, I know that came to my phone. Of course, I don't believe there was any advance notice about the tornadoes. They... The Weather Service never picked up on it until it happened. So nothing was sent out, but there was an opportunity for flash flooding. And I know I did receive that that evening. Did anybody else?
I got multiple alerts that night.
You got multiple alerts that night, yeah.
I did too.
So there are other things that you can sign up for. So just go off to the city website then, and you can get signed up for them.
What are we doing for the people about internet?
There's an issue.
Really?
Yeah.
Right, well, it seems like if you went back to the way you handled things before you had internet, because it seems to be a little more effective.
But if it's 1:00 in the morning, who's going to have their television on?
I've been working on it all night.
That's your issue.
There might be... That's a good question. There might be an issue, but we could call the regular home phone to leave a message off to check in with the EMA.
And we were going to make sure that we did contact all of the businesses in town to make sure that... Most businesses have somebody that's in charge of safety and things for their business, and make sure that they are signed up for it.
Right, we'll be following through with all employers and all businesses in the community on a personal basis to make sure they are signed up.
Okay. Now can we discuss?
What else?
Oh, let's talk about Southern Avenue.
Oh, Southern Avenue.
Southeast Street, Oakwood Avenue, the railroad crossings. There's a variety of things in there. Pick one.
What would you like to talk about? The railroad crossings, Norfolk Southern has taken a long time to do the railroads. They've used the excuse that there's been a lot of railroad traffic, and they don't have enough time between trains to fix it. It's kind of a lame excuse, you know, but that's the excuse they've given us. It isn't very busy tracks. I think there's 80 trains maybe go through there a day. But, you know, if they would, you know, shut the tracks out for a day, probably could have had it done. Charlotte will be open by the end of the week. And I think Southern's open by the end of the week. And I think that's all. It's closed, right? I think 98's open now. I'm guessing so. I apologize about the length of the time. It wasn't supposed to close anywhere near that time. But we'll have a good idea next time, you know, what to insist upon, so...
Are they going to close Beale then?
I don't think Beale's on the schedule to be closed.
It's in October.
It is? It's going to be later on this?
No, about the first week of October.
Okay, so...
Right away.
There are... I saw an email. They're going to do another two or three in the city.
What's the other one? Do you know what the other one is?
It might be Warren. One of the other secondary streets. But Beale will be closed soon.
Well, they would be if they wanted to smooth right now.
Of course. Of course.
Yeah.
But do check our city website, 'cause I am keeping, uh, keeping that posted daily as I get updates from Norfolk and Southern.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of trains, is there any way you guys could put a, um, ordinance on the train horns at night so people can actually sleep?
Yep.
They've already been reduced some.
Simple. Hell! They, uh, we can make us a silent city, but it would cost a million dollars to do it. So, the, uh, that's what we're dealing with.
It's not as easy, excuse me, for, um, it's not as easy as putting an ordinance, you have, there's, there's so many hoops you have to jump through, very, very expensive hoops that becomes cost prohibitive. In other words, the railroad doesn't want to do it, and so, if you want to do it, they'll allow you to do it, but they make it almost impossible for you to do it. So, we've looked into it already.
'Cause I, I know if I have a too loud of a muffler, or if I blast my music to the, I'd eat trouble.
I, I, I think we might, we may, we could probably start with something easier, like motorcycles, you know.
That would be, might get down a little bit.
Okay, and, uh, railroads, let's move to Southern.
Okay, Southern, um, well, Southern Avenue paving started on Kayler. They're moving up to Spring, and it's quite an undertaking. Uh, this was basically rebuilding road in the curbs, and they're going west through the east. Progress has been very good, weather's been cooperative. That track should be open by the end of the week also. And Southern out by the Y and C.A. is in a homestretch there, too. They're working back, working on that, building your company, so we expect that to be open here in the very near future.
Oakwood East?
Oakwood East, yes.
Waterline?
I'm not sure what the timeframe is on Oakwood and East and Waterline, uh, what the, what the specs are to date there, but, uh, the folks that do it on, uh, underground utilities is always ahead of the schedule on a very hard-working.
What I saw this evening on my way here is they've already started on Oakwood. Uh, they've already started putting cement down. So, they're, they're getting ready to, that will get paved first, because they had already done the mill thing on, uh, part of it. So, they're already putting down the cement, so they're gonna, I think they're gonna pave that first, before they do the rest of East and Nora.
Lot of construction going on around town. Uh, the, uh, the railroad tracks, uh, you know, were something we didn't actually plan this year. We had a lot of things going on in town that we mentioned, uh, quite a few times during the month, excuse me, during, then the construction year. The mill and pave is in the homestretch, there's just a few things yet to do on that, but hopefully then by the end of October, uh, you know, the city will be pretty quiet. We have one major paving yet to go, that's on nineteen and a hundred, and that, we haven't actually heard word from ODOT being started, but it's gonna have to start pretty soon, it's gonna get complete. Did I miss something, John?
Um, no, uh, I have consulted with R.A. Boris, they're the ones working on Oakwood and East Street, and I coordinated with them to make sure that Oakwood is open while we're moving through Hopley Avenue with the new sanitary sewer line. So, they've assured me that they'll have Oakwood open as a, as a access east and, east and west.
And you also have information on the city website?
Yeah, keeping that updated.
And then same on Hopley, the paving of Walnut Hopley, right?
Yes, correct.
Any other traffic questions? Okay, moving.
Or, or.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. War.
Uh, have you found any contact with, like, the east-west CFNE?
Yeah.
On their crossings?
Yes, yeah. CFNE is going to be, um, working on the Walnut Street by the courthouse. As soon as ODOT sets a date, I'm gonna call them, they're gonna come in and coordinate that, and, uh, they're also gonna partner with us on Norris, uh, Norris and Dusky, that they did a couple of years ago. We're gonna be, you know, we're, you know, we're working that.
I know they need some work, but I don't want to see them closing at the same time as Norfolk is.
No, we're, we're, yeah, we're.
But they do need some work going on.
They do need some work, yeah. So, you know, hopefully by the end of, say, end of October, I think, you know, we should be pretty quiet, and just type rate needs, you know. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just a quick one. Uh, I got a request for the traffic commission to look at the, there, the, on Meyer Street, the corner at Perry. Apparently they're, and part, I think parking's allowed up close to Perry, and it's difficult when they park on both sides there to get in there.
Okay, so we bring that up to traffic?
Yeah.
Um, so right now we allow parking on both sides?
I'm, I, that's what I was told. So, I, I mean, I drove through there, and I see that ones park, they park close to Perry, and it makes it difficult, and I, and I, about a fire engine or something, okay, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, what, that one? We'll, we'll have a look at that, so.
Anyone else with questions about traffic? Yes, sir?
Um, I, I live on Warren Street, and I noticed a lot of people parking on both sides, and I feel that the street's actually not wide enough, because even police officers have to duck and weave, and that could be a very potential bad hazard if there was any emergencies. And I do know that, uh, there are fire engines and police officers and squads that go down that route, and if somebody's not paying attention, it could be a very, very big tragedy.
We're very much aware of that, and we're very much aware of the fact of we're stuck with the width of the roads that we currently have, and in order to be able to accommodate a lot of the, uh, parking, since there isn't a lot of off-street parking available, neighborhoods have elected, and we've really not, really done anything about, uh, about it, because it's, uh, and, of course, the police and the fire are aware of, too, where the narrow streets are, so, uh.
Well, there is an alleyway back there, you could have mandatory parking alleyway with, uh, on one side or the other, which could be a solution for that.
We'll talk to them about that. Okay? I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively. So, Mr. Trucca? Mr. McKeever? A motion by Mr. Trucca, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Reported city officers. Mayor Reese?
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have a formal report, I just wanted to put into the record my remarks for the dedication of water plant last Saturday, and, and also thank, uh, everyone for coming. We had a huge crowd, we're thrilled with the crowd. It was a wonderful day, it was a lot of work. Thank all the council members for coming and, uh, for all your support on it. I, I can't say anything bad about it. I, everybody was, uh, had, had the best comments about it, and they were thrilled to be there, and they, it's good, you know, one thing we take for granted so much in the city is the water. When you turn it on, you expect it to be safe and clean, you know? And now they know what goes in, and it's not quite so easy. You get it from the river, and it goes to the reservoir, and it goes to the water plant, and it comes to your camp. There it is. I was the only one that did that for many years, now I think, I think about it a lot. So, it was a huge project for many years. I singled out some people that I thought were, um, important, and I know Gary, um, Gary Williams also singled out another person, Madam President, and who was the, kind of like the guiding voice and the constant from the beginning to the end. So, a lot of people to thank. Thank you letters for everybody that showed up, the different groups are gonna go out soon, but, uh, a lot of thanks belongs right in this room, it's council members here that voted a couple of years ago to, you know, to support this project.
There you go, yeah.
Yeah, so it's open. Water's great, and now we're positioned for, uh, one of the largest supplies of water, and, and we want to sell more water, so use more water, take more showers, and, uh, we're looking for new customers. Thank you, Madam President.
I think the best question I heard was somebody asked them, "How long does it take a gallon of water to get through the water plants?" And one of the employees was standing there, and he says, "I don't know," but he says, "we put out 10,000 gallons a minute." He says, "We don't deal in terms of one gallon."
Well, we can do the math on that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to do the math on that. Any other questions for the mayor this evening? Mr. War.
Um, someone asked me the other day, uh, "The police department, two men short?"
No, one man short. Yeah, one man. We, we lost, uh, one earlier.
You go leave another one?
I don't know about that, don't know about that. We haven't got any formal resignation from anyone. So, we don't, we have one short, we've been kind of, since the budgets have been tight, uh, since, you know, first part of the year, we've just kind of, uh, tried to save some money, see how the tax revenues are coming in, but, uh, we're getting ready to hire again. There are, the civil service test has been given, you know, chief has, um, chief has people ready. So, in case we do get resignations, we have people lined up.
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out, when was, when did the last officer resign?
That would have been, um, do you remember, was it June? May, May or June? Yeah, May or June. You remember that all choice?
That timeframe sounds about right. Can you remember for sure?
It's been twenty-three months.
Okay, well, I'm getting at, if he resigned then, if he hadn't resigned, he's, he's in the budget through the rest of the year. So, why don't we hire the new one at that time? He should, should be able to afford the new one, because he's not going to be making as much money as the one that's left.
Well, even, even if, you know, it's in the budget, you know, if we spend every dime that's in the budget, we're, we got some issues at the end of the year. So, the budget's like the max that we can spend. We're always looking to save the city some money, and that was a decision that we made. Jeff and I made that decision along with input from the chief, and, uh, matter of fact, we just met with the chief last week about it, and we told him, we gave him permission to go ahead and get the staff back up to twenty-one.
Okay, I'll just warn him, maybe we don't need one, and that's, we're wrong about it.
Well, twenty-one is our, I, I think the department operates well at twenty-one. Um, we've had very good success ongoing the crime rate. Uh, it's a very busy department, you can see by the police reports that they run quite a bit, especially on the weekends, that you keep them really hopping. So, our goal was never to go back to twenty, our goal was to see, to avoid a layoff in case tax revenues, uh, trended lower, continued to trend lower. So, now we had several good months in there, so we felt strong enough that revenues were gonna hold that we could afford it, to put the twenty-first officer back in. And so, chief is now, as of last week, is, is working that process right now.
Any other questions for the mayor this evening? None? Uh, Service Safety Director Wagner is not with us this evening, and he did not submit a report. Uh, Law Director, Mr. Ratliff?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, no written report. I do have one referral, uh, the property behind Kroger's, I, I think we've finally developed a resolution of property owners. I don't know if we'll be completely ready by the next committee meeting, but definitely by October fifth committee meeting, so, either for that to Public Lands and Buildings, please.
Okay. I need a motion to refer the property behind Kroger's that had the fire to Public Lands and Buildings. Mr. Trucca? Second? Second. Mr. McKeever? A motion by Mr. Trucca, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to put the property behind Kroger's in the Public Lands and Buildings. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Moving on to the auditor.
Mrs. Shiper? Thank you, Madam President. I have no, uh, formal report this evening, but I do have one referral. Uh, we need an appropriation in the Derelict Building Liability Fund in the amount of $24,433 for fire damage at eight-twenty-four Arrowhead Drive. The property has been demolished, and it'll be rebuilt, um, and the insurance check has been received.
Yes, I was surprised, I didn't know about the fire there, and I happened to be going down Arrowhead, and there's just a slab there right now.
Right, I, I knew that they had a fire, but I didn't realize it was that extensive, but they felt that there was nothing they could do but take it down, and that they'll use the existing foundations, but they're gonna totally rebuild.
Any questions for the auditor? Okay, I need a motion then to put this referral into, uh, this goes to, what, Finance Committee?
Some move. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Warbaugh, to put in Finance Committee the Derelict Building Liability Fund in the amount of $24,430. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the motion passed. Oh, you have the auditor statement of cash position in front of you. Uh, we gave it to you at the last meeting, uh, dated August the thirty-first, 2017. We need a motion to accept and file that statement.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Piper, seconded by Ms. Sack, to accept and file the auditor statement of cash position dated August the thirty-first, 2017. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Before you, you have the Treasurers' Report for August of 2017. It's been submitted for your review. We don't have anything from the police chief, the fire chief. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
Some move.
Motion by Ms. Sack, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is the time where we have visitors' input regarding reports of standing or special committees and, and of city officers. Anyone have any questions, or would you like to direct anyone this evening? None? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have five pieces of legislation, ordinance number forty-two, um, 2017, amending and supplementing ordinance number fifty, 2016, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2017, by the creation of a 2018 Crime Victims Assistance Fund subparagraph containing a Victim Advocate category, containing a Personal Services Line item and a Materials and Supplies line item, and finally, by the creation of a 2018 Victims of Crime Act Fund subparagraph containing a Victim Advocate category, containing a Personal Services line item, and declaring an emergency. That goes back to Finance. Ordinance number forty-three, 2017, amending and supplementing ordinance number fifty, 2016, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2017, by appropriating from unappropriated 2018 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Funds, the sum of $10,568.59 to the Personal Services line item within the Victim Advocate category within the 2018 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated 2018 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance Funds, the sum of $375, to the Materials and Supplies line item within the Victim Advocate category within the 2018 Ohio Crime Victims Assistance subparagraph. Further appropriating from unappropriated 2018 Victims of Crime Act Funds, the sum of $2,818.29 to the Personal Services line item within the Victim Advocate category within the 2018 Victims of Crime Act subparagraph and declaring an emergency. That also goes to Finance. Ordinance number forty-four, 2017, an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Biscirus codified ordinances. That's also to Finance. Ordinance number forty-five, 2017, amending the traffic control map and file established by sections three zero five point zero one, three zero five point zero two, and three zero five point zero three of the codified ordinances of the city of Biscirus, Ohio, to provide henceforth for the, for the placement of no parking signs on the south side of River Street between Sandusky Avenue and Tipton Street, and no parking on the east and west sides of the two-hundred to three-hundred blocks of East Street. That is referred to Health and Safety Committee, and final resolution number two twenty-six, 2017, authorizing and directing the Biscirus City Auditor in behalf of the city of Biscirus, Ohio, to issue a warrant or warrants, as the case may be, drawn upon the appropriate appropriation or appropriations, to retroactively pay Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly for work on the airport runway not to exceed $71,850 without the customary purchase order dated prior to the billing date and declaring an emergency, and that is referred to the Finance Committee.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
Some move.
Second. Motion by Mr. War, seconded by Mr. McKeever, to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number forty-two dash 2017 is referred back to Finance Committee. Ordinance forty-three dash 2017 is referred to Finance Committee. Ordinance number forty-four dash 2017 is referred to Finance Committee. Ordinance number forty-five dash 2017 is referred to Health and Safety Committee, and resolution number two twenty-eight dash 2017 is to Public Lands and Buildings. two thousand and seventeen is to public lands and buildings. This is the time where any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Any comments? Yes?
Uh, there's a typo on this. That's resolution two twenty-six, two thousand and seventeen, referred back to Finance. This, that was typed in here, two twenty-eight, back to public lands and buildings, but that's the, that's the correction.
It's two twenty-six.
Okay, it's two twenty-six, it's back to Finance, okay. Okay. Any other public participation? Do we need a recess this evening? No, I'll move right on. Committee reports on pending legislation. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favor ordinance forty-two dash two thousand and seventeen, creation of crime victim grant funds. Finance is favor ordinance forty-three dash two thousand and seventeen, crime victims appropriations. Finance is favor ordinance forty-four dash two thousand and seventeen, codified ordinance update, and Finance is favor resolution two twenty-six, two thousand and seventeen, uh, the authorization to pay airport.
Okay, Health and Safety Committee?
Health and Safety Committee is favor mode ordinance forty-five dash two thousand and seventeen, which is the traffic control map changes.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept this report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Piper, second by Ms. Sack, to accept the reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number forty-two dash two thousand and seventeen, which is the creation of crime victims grant funds, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Orw?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-two, two thousand and seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance forty-two dash two thousand and seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Orw?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wireball?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-two dash two thousand and seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number forty-three dash two thousand and seventeen, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency? Is the crime victims appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Orw?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Ordinance number forty-three, two thousand and seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance forty-three dash two thousand and seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Orw?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand and seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Orw?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand and seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Sack?
Yes.
Orw?
Yeah.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-four dash two thousand and seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number forty-five dash two thousand and seventeen, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Orw?
Yeah.
Piper?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wireball?
Yes.
Ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and seventeen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance forty-five dash two thousand and seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
Piper?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Orw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Ordinance number forty-five dash two thousand and seventeen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution two twenty-six dash two thousand and seventeen, which is the authorization to pay at the airport, repairs, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Orw?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Truka?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-six, two thousand and seventeen.
Do I hear a note, a motion to adopt proposed resolution two twenty-six dash two thousand and seventeen?
So moved.
Orw?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Ross?
Yeah.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Sack?
Yes.
Resolution number two twenty-six dash two thousand and seventeen is duly adopted. Thank you. Old business. Anyone have any old business they'd like to bring up this evening? Yes, Mr. McKeever?
I do believe we talked about the water, expansion of the water lines.
Yes.
I do have a, um, person that I work with who approached me, and I have a copy of her letter. I really need, I do believe we need to, uh, pursue this. She's requesting water service, and she lives on Crestline Road, approximately, um, you'd say a quarter of a mile from, uh, um, where we have water to, uh, that Wedstone Estates, or what, what is it?
We have a twenty-eight.
What, uh, uh, you know, West Summers, or, they have water there.
River.
And she says there's several other neighbors that are having trouble getting water. I'm just saying, I think we need to discuss this.
Okay.
Right now, we are, uh, putting a plan together. Already met with, uh, your cousin, Lynn and McKeever. We looked at preliminary plan, we're looking at, uh, the distance. Uh, he's actually been working quite hard on it, has the, uh, elevations and a number of customers and the costs. We're working on, uh, funding right now, but I've had, uh, I've had people from north, south, and east, west around U.S. Iris that have requested. Somebody at church on Sunday lives on, uh, Wyandotte Road, you know, so there's people on Wyandotte Road that would like to have our water too, so, um, we wanna get it to them.
Yeah, we do.
We wanna get it to them. No, I, we're, we're, we're gonna plan right now to make sure that, uh, we can do it, uh, cost effectively.
Do you have any information to provide us on Thursday?
Uh, I don't wanna consider it that quick. Um, we're not quite ready to present the plan, uh, but we should, within a month, have something we can bring to council.
Uh, I mean, they are in dire straits. They are in a process of, having to throw another well, and they have not had luck.
I know. And it's still gonna take some time, you know, even if you-
Correct.
-get funding, it's probably gonna be next year anyway.
But, and she understands that.
Yeah, so.
I did tell her that.
Okay. You know, we've got, but that was, I think, the top priority, coming out that way on, um, Nineteen to Crestline Road. That's been in discussion for quite a while. I think that, that could be like the number one priority. I don't wanna, you know, match that in stones, I-
Right, I understand. I just, I think we might have to be able to discuss something on Thursday.
Yes. Well, we can bring it up on Thursday, and get Safety Service Director's opinion on it, and see what he says. I think, uh-
Good.
Uh, we were getting the minds together that we're gonna, are gonna get this done. Then we're gonna present it to you to see if it matches something you wanna prove financially, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
There's, there's about twelve thousand people live in the city of U.S. Iris, but within, within a mile or two around it, you could probably add another twenty-five percent. So there's a potential water customer, so.
Nearly eighteen thousand.
Nearly eighteen thousand, thank you. So, yeah, and many of them don't have a water right now. Most of them don't. Uh, we go to Winfrey School, and then we go to North Robinson, and there's a lot in between that, that we, you know, we've got a great product to sell. And it's cheap, a little over penny a gallon. I do realize that when you're out of city limits, you'll pay one and a half times, but you're still gonna get less than two cents a gallon. I mean, it's incredibly, uh, you know, an expensive resource. Unless your water's running all the time, then you got nothing.
Any other old business to be brought up this evening? Moving up to new miscellaneous business. Uh, September the third is the GE Family Day from eleven AM to three PM. It is not open to the public, uh, but over nine hundred people are expected, so we just sort of wanted to let everybody know that there's probably going to be a lot of activity and cars in that area on that day.
Pretty exclusive.
Pardon me?
It's pretty exclusive.
And it's always nice when, uh, you know, when a, a big company like that does that for their employees and their families, so, uh, we, we wanted to make sure we mentioned that this evening. Uh, September the twenty-sixth is the dedication of the Veterans Hall of Fame Monument. It's on the southeast corner of the county courthouse, and that will be at ten AM in the morning. I think you've seen all the activity that's been taking place there by the courthouse. On October the fifth, oh, what a night, a Crawford County Community Concert Association, seven PM. Uh, that's at the elementary school. Uh, there are tickets available. Uh, they're only twenty dollars, and, uh, they always put on a great show, though. There, you can, uh, contact them at www.crewco.comconcert.com, okay, uh, if you like a ticket. Uh, October the twenty-first is spectacular, from four to seven at Almira Park. Plans are already underway, and we're talking about it.
Last year's was great, this one's gonna be even better.
Okay. Any other newer miscellaneous business to be brought up this evening? No one, we're all here this evening. Uh, joint regular committee meetings, all referrals from this[1717.25]